So obviously, the student sexual assault cases at Pally were what propelled you into your advocacy and eventually the decision to run for school board in this November election.
Right.
And I've heard you speak, as the public has, at school board meetings and in other public settings about your views about what happened and Title IX compliance. I'm curious if you were on the board at the time that these cases came out, how would you have handled it and what would you have done differently?
Well, I think that's a good question. I think that I've been pretty disappointed in the way that the board handled their performance in handling those sexual assault incidents. I mean, I give them credit for bringing Cozen in to do the October 2016 report. But, you know, the two Cozen reports confirm a systematic lack of accountability and compliance within the district, which the prior OCR letter of findings also discussed. And the thing that I guess I would want to do differently is that the employees who were involved were not identified in either of those two written reports.
They eventually were in the 2016.
They were not identified in the written reports in either one. In the second one, for the November 2015, which came out later, there were redactions. In the first one, they weren't identified. They were verbally identified and you had it in an article, but they have never been identified in the written report. And at least from my perspective, you know, this could have happened to any one of our children. And it seems to me that to make change, we need to know who did wrong, what went wrong, and who was it that did wrong to try to make change. I think there needs to be, I mean, from my opinion, I think the only way to make change going forward is to have the district employees be held individually accountable. If they're held individually accountable, and some of them have had some accountability applied, then I think they're going to change their behavior going forward.
So don't you feel that in the end, you can quarrel with the process and what specifically got released when it did, but don't you feel to some extent in the end, the actions that resulted, the outcomes, were consistent with what you're describing?
I think for the November 2015, the Cozen report, those employees have not been identified. There are redactions. And I think there are some employees who potentially might have had accountability administered who maybe have not. And I think it would be appropriate, since, you know, students were harmed in these situations, in these incidents. I mean, when they came out through the media, it was about how, they weren't talking about, "I'm so upset that I was assaulted." What they were talking about was, "These trusted adults, these administrators did not take care of me." And so that was their message. And so I'm responding to that message because these are trusted adults, and so it's a disappointment. So I guess in response to your question, I'm not sure that process is finished.
And so where would you draw that privacy line between too much invasion into the internal disciplinary and sort of performance process within a public school district and publicly explaining the steps that were taken? Like, let's, for example, just to-
I'm not referring to the student situation, though. I'm referring to the public employees.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Yeah. No, I'm wondering where you would, are public employees entitled to any privacy, to their, to the internal warnings and discipline and performance evaluations that are conducted to them? Where do you draw that line?
From what I know, in terms of public records requests, they're not entitled to that privacy, disciplinary actions or letters in their personnel file. And I also assume that as public employees, there isn't any expectation of privacy in the course of their public duties. And school districts are a very highly regulated entity, and as they should be, because our children are there. And obviously, the first order of business is to keep our children safe. And then, if they're safe, you know, we need to do our best to educate them well.
So just to push that one step further, let's say there's a middle school teacher that parents think is underperforming as a teacher, and they have made complaints to the administration that this English teacher is not a very good English teacher, and here's why. Are you saying that those kinds of issues and how the district deals with an unperforming English teacher, underperforming English teacher, should be matters for public discussion?
I'm not saying that. I'm talking about laws that were not followed in the case of these sexual assault incidents at Pally, which has been substantiated by the Cozen report, and in the other case, by the family has made allegations of the same. I think that's a radically different situation.
So the line for you would be behavior that was contrary to the law or to some important district procedure or policy?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm curious, the teachers and administrators are maybe not in agreement that certain administrators who are still on the job should be let go. Is that also your sense from the people who are working at Pally and God, that they disagree with you, that these administrators should go?
Well, I don't think anyone was let go, as far as I know.
Yeah.
There were a couple of people that resigned.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what happened there or their choices. There were some people that received a letter in their personnel file.
Do you believe that Adam Paulson and Kathy Lawrence should be terminated?
I think that what was done wrong should be exposed, and that there should be some accountability administered for that. And according to the family for the November 2015 incident, those family, the family member, the father, says that Adam Paulson, Vicki Kim, and Kim DiOrio were involved in that incident and did not take care of his daughter, and that laws were ignored. So I think it's appropriate that at least there be some recognition of that, if true, and at least a letter in their personnel file seems appropriate.
Okay. Going beyond that, so the district has made some progress in Title IX with the reassignment administration position. Do you think that that-
With the, I'm sorry, what position?
With the Title IX compliance officer who was hired. Do you think that that's sufficient, aside from what you just said about wanting those involved to be exposed? Do you think that there is progress being made?
I think it's, I think it's great that they've hired a Title IX compliance officer, and I think it's good that they've made the public records office full-time. I think it's not sufficient. I know that they're also talking about hiring an investigator as well. You know, I think that the more support, the better. I mean, I don't think they have an investigator on staff yet, but I think there are still some deficiencies that need to be remedied there.
So if you were elected in November and take office in December, what would you do about all of this?
What would I do about?
You're now on the school board. Now what?
Well, the school board is responsible for ensuring compliance with all applicable laws and regulations in the school district.
But you're one vote. So how do you become a person that can get two other votes?
Well, I think that even though I'm not on the school board right now, I think that I've had some effect already. And I think I've been effective in raising the issue. And of course, the press has been instrumental also in raising the issue. I can't take full credit for that. But I think that I also have helped to shed light on these issues and help to make those in the school district aware that, you know, students are affected by these, and we want to see our students, these are our children in the district. And it could have been any one of our children. So we want to see our children protected. And most of these laws that we're talking about are anti-discrimination laws, and they were designed to help protect children. And so we want to see those laws followed. So I think I've helped already to be effective without a vote.
Are there specific changes you would advocate for, you know, from within the district or on the board if you were elected, or specific steps you would take to do that?
Well, I think that, you know, we've raised a number of issues in which there's been a lack of compliance. I mean, one of the other issues I'm thinking of is the instructional minutes and the calculations for those. And we've also had questions that have been raised to me about special education and compliance there as well. And I think that something that could be helpful is to consider is whether or not some areas need to be audited, just as you're doing financial auditing, perhaps auditing some other areas for compliance, double-checking work. I mean, we have some of these routine administrative errors that have happened, unfortunately. Sweating the details a little bit would be helpful, I think. I mean, the last year and a half, two years, there've been a number of things that have happened.
At the last board meeting, you made an interesting comparison. You cited the new Nike Colin Kaepernick ad campaign, which I'm sure people are aware of, but it has the tagline, "Believe in something even if it means sacrificing everything." And you also seem to suggest that the blowback he's experienced as a football player for his protests is similar to retaliation that you've experienced for speaking out, as you have primarily on Title IX issues. I'm curious if you could elaborate on that and give examples of if you have experienced retaliation as a direct result of your advocacy.
I think in that speech that I made, I was referring not only to myself, but to others. There are a group of us, I think, that hope to make change and to see some fiscal responsibility, some accountability, and some transparency within the district, and also to bring the focus back onto students and protecting students. And I think many of that group are, some of them are able to speak out, but all of us are afraid that our children will be affected by speaking out. And so myself personally, I can tell you that I spoke on May 9th about the Verity Magazine article, in which it was news to me, I hadn't been reading earlier, apologies, about how the Kim DiOrio and the 25 sexual misconduct allegations that had been withheld for three years. And to me, you know, some of those allegations were from students, students who had the courage to come forward and report on what had taken place, at risk to themselves, because they were in high school. And at the time, you know, Phil Winston was the principal, and so they were reporting on sexual misconduct. And of course, I'm sure they were fearful of coming forward and whether or not that might have an impact on any of their college admission process, recommendation letters or others. So I think I was referring to all of that. You know, for me, I felt that during those three years, there had to have been ongoing harm to students. And so I wanted to speak up about it. But my first statement after talking about it was, "I want to be protected from retaliation" at that time. That was May 9th, 2017. And the next day, I got a phone call from a staff member, a Pally staff member, Esther Wojcicki. And I felt that the purpose of that call was to discuss why I was speaking. I don't know how she got my cell phone number, to discuss why I was up there speaking, and whether or not I knew what I was talking about, and maybe I should rethink what I was saying, and et cetera, et cetera. So I mean, that's one example that I felt there was an immediate response. And I, you know, felt as though I was talking about something that, to me, I thought was common sense, that, you know, if you'd withheld something for three years and students were involved, probably there was going to be ongoing harm to our students. I felt that was inappropriate. So I think there's a lot of fear of retaliation out there, and I was just speaking to that.
So just to be clear, you weren't alleging that you have been retaliated against?
I feel that Ms. Wojcicki called me to try to persuade me to change my views.
And do you, that feel like retaliation to you?
I felt that it, maybe you could use a different term for it, but it certainly wasn't, didn't seem appropriate to me. I mean, we're in the United States of America. I should be allowed to-
She could probably make the same statement, that she's entitled to defend or advocate herself, too.
That's true. She could.
Yeah.
Okay. Sure. So I wanted to address your Public Records Act requests. So you've filed, I don't have the updated number, maybe you do, but dozens of requests for information from the district relating to Title IX investigations and personnel decisions, as we've discussed. As the school board considers limiting what they've described as, you know, overly broad and burdensome Public Records Act requests, do you think you are justified in continuing and making those kinds of requests? And is it fair for the district to potentially limit requests that have 5,000 or more responsive pages?
I think that the reason I've made public records requests to the district is related to employee misconduct. I mean, if you look at the vast majority of the requests that I've put in, it's related to employee misconduct related to the sexual assault incidents at Pally. And again, I'm not sure that those have been resolved fully yet. There was information that was given to Cozen that's referred to in the report that a number of us would like to be able to see and understand exactly what that means. And so also, because those things happened so long ago, November 2015 and October 2016, there's a very lengthy time period to have made those searches in. How do we know when communication would have happened during that time period? So of course, they're going to be extremely broad, those public records requests. And I think that, you know, keeping the focus on the reason for the public records request, to me, seems appropriate. It's due to employee misconduct, which again, I don't think has been fully resolved yet.
Is it fair to say with regards to these PRAs that Elaine is referring to, that sort of underlying this is a lack of trust that you have in the current administration and board? That if you trusted those people more, then those requests wouldn't be necessary? Is that, is that what underlies this, is a breakdown in trust?
I think that if there was no employee misconduct, there would probably be no public records requests.
But there's probably always, I mean, there's employee misconduct everywhere, private industry, public employment. So I guess my question is, is it a, is it a lack of trust that that misconduct gets handled the way it should, that's at the root of those requests?
Well, there was employee misconduct. It's been substantiated.
Right.
It affected students. They were harmed. Those are our children. That could have been my child. I think that, it could have been my child.
Right. But my question-
And it could happen again.
My question is about trust.
I understand.
Because you're, if you're elected, then you're going to want the public to have trust in your judgment. And your judgment may include drawing a boundary between what should be released as a public record or what's subject to the public record check and what isn't. So it seems like this is as much about trust in the people making these decisions as it is in the value of obtaining all those documents.
You know, I think all the people on the school board are decent people, from what I can tell. I'm not saying they're not. But when I look at the record of the outcomes related to the school district and school board decisions, I see that these two sexual assault incidents occurred during the time when a federal law enforcement agency was investigating the district. And they apparently were not disclosed to the federal law enforcement agency. And also, there was prior conduct that OCR was investigating.
Yeah. And I don't want to, I'm just trying to zero in on the trust factor.
I know, but I'm trying to make my point, which, which is that, you know, I wasn't paying attention at that time, but when I look back at the record, I see that this, there's this description of the behavior, the culture, according to a neutral party, saying that there's systemic behavior and there's a culture, and it's continuing behavior. So it hasn't been remedied.
Well, so let me ask it a different way. If you're elected to the school board, what will you do affirmatively to rebuild trust of people like you in the community that have these doubts about the way the district has been run, when you now are in the chair of a school board member?
I would attempt to be as transparent as possible, and also to try to have some accountability take place. I think that would build trust with the community.
So you'd try to, you'd try to persuade your colleagues, basically, that either documents need to be released or things need to be done differently?
Yes. Correct.
Okay.
I wanted to move on to fiscal responsibility, if that's okay with everyone. So you were just saying you're an advocate for fiscal responsibility, and that's been coming up a couple of times with some new proposals that are out there. So one is the county housing, teacher housing idea for a county site in Palo Alto, in which different jurisdictions are asked to be putting in quite a bit of money to support that. So I want to know if you're in favor, I believe it's $600,000 per district. Are you in favor of that? Why or why not?
Just to explain that, I mean, I think if I was a school board member and the school board members that we have, I mean, they're obviously allocating our tax dollars, right, for teacher compensation. And certainly, as a school board member, allocating our tax dollars, I would like to see it reach all of our teachers and reach them equally. And the teacher housing proposal that is out there would benefit only a select few of our Palo Alto Unified teachers. And our tax dollars would also be going to benefit non-Palo Alto Unified teachers. So I would like to see us use our tax dollars to benefit our Palo Alto Unified teachers and to benefit them equally, so that they can make their own decisions about how to spend that money with regards to their housing.
So are there other mechanisms for aiding teachers with the burden of housing that you would favor? I mean, some things have included like financing down payments, trying to link teachers with homeowners who have an extra room. Are there other approaches that you've thought about that you would favor?
I haven't explored those. I mean, but I guess I'm thinking in the more simple cases that we want to compensate our teachers well, and we want them to make their own choices about how they're going to take care of their housing. And so if we are keeping up with districts that are comparable to us with our compensation, and I would like to see all of our teachers share equally in whatever compensation we choose to award and allocate to them.
Stanford general use permit is another area in which money has arisen. So trustee Todd Collins has called on Stanford to do its fair share when it comes to plans to compensate the district. If there's more students that come in and Stanford isn't paying property taxes for the housing that it builds, then the school district will be at a deficit. Stanford denies that. I'm wondering what your thoughts are on what Stanford should do.
Well, I've been following, yes. I can't say that I've dug very deep into that issue, but I have been following what Todd has been doing. And certainly, I would agree with him that it would be best if you could have some sort of contribution from Stanford in terms of the impact that would take place to the school district. It seems a little bit unclear still as to what that impact may ultimately be, whether it's, I guess 275 was one number, up to 1,500, I think, was another potential number that's been out on the press. And it's unclear to me when those impacts could occur also, since I think the permit is still in flux. But I think he's raising very good issues about the impact to the district, since our property taxes do not increase based on having additional students in our enrollment.
So what would you propose doing about it?
I agree with Todd. I mean, I think his approach is good in that he's seeking to find a way to get a contribution from Stanford to help offset the impact to the school district.
Right. But there's no, what would be the mechanics of that?
Well, I know that the school board has proceeded to write a letter and trying to have some impact with the county, who is in charge of approving or not approving that permit. So I'm sure that Todd and others are trying to be influential with our elected representatives on the county board, supervisory board.
And would you extend that to a school site as well?
Extend it to a school site? I'm sorry.
To Stanford providing land for an additional school site?
I'm sorry, I haven't looked into that enough to answer that question. I haven't heard Todd referencing that either in his remarks, has he?
Hmm.
Okay. I missed that, then.
There've been several decisions in recent years that were made over the objections of teachers, the mandatory use of Schoology at the high schools, the move to full-day kindergarten, new elementary mathematics curricula. I'm curious if you believe the teachers' preferences in these situations should have been weighed more heavily by the board and the district, and if teacher voice is an issue that needs to be sort of incorporated more into district decision-making?
Yeah. I feel that teacher voice is incorporated into district decision-making. So it was surprising to me to hear that the teachers, in one of the questions that I had encountered, didn't feel as though that they were having weight in the district decision-making. So I understand that in some cases, perhaps they haven't agreed with the outcome of some things. And I'm sure that other stakeholders may feel that as well, the community and such.
And as a board member, how would you, if elected, balance teacher opinions with parent desires and student needs?
As a school board member, I think what I bring and what I offer is that I'm going to be fighting for our children. And so, you know, there wouldn't be a district without our children, without our students, and without our tax dollars. So I feel that the school board ultimately is responsible for everything that happens in the schools, and certainly have to be listening to every stakeholder voice. But my main concern going forward is that I would be, I mean, I feel like I've spent the past 18 months fighting for our children. And of course, that would be my orientation going forward. Doesn't mean I wouldn't listen to every voice, but that is my orientation.
I think everybody involved in the district would probably answer that the same way. Teachers care about our kids, too, and would probably argue that their professional judgment is what should take priority over individual parent concerns, or at least should be weighed equally. I'm not sure how one, as a school board member, filters that input with the idea that I'm doing, I'm here for the benefit of the kids. Can you give an example of an issue where you would have made a decision based on the best interest of the kids and how it differed from the teacher's input versus parent input?
Well, back to the sexual assault incidents, I think that I would have, if I were a school board member, lobbied to have the public employees, the district employees, be identified. But in terms of the teacher input, long ago, there was a discussion between community members, parents mainly, who did not feel that everyday math was the best curriculum decision, maybe it was 10, 11 years, I don't know how many years ago. And the teachers at that time, as a stakeholder group, I believe, said, "Well, we know better as the educators." And so in that example, everyday math was implemented, and now everyday math by the educators has been determined as not to be, not to have been the best decision in terms of a curriculum decision. So I guess I'm saying that not any one stakeholder necessarily has an ownership of, you know, the truth or absolutely the right decision in every situation.
Maybe we could use a more recent example, which is the English department's and Pally administration's recommendations that the freshman English be not tracked, dual-tracked. The school board and many parents objected to that, some members of the school board and many parents. How would you have voted on that particular issue?
For me, I feel that differentiation is important, and that it serves students on all the different ends of the spectrum, that they can go at their own level and their own pace. It seems to me that there were concerns of a different nature going on as well, in that certain population was comprised in one class versus another. And I know that the teachers were concerned about trying to combine the classes for a variety of reasons, curriculum as well as to assist students of all, all students.
Right. So how would you have voted on that?
I would keep the D lane, I would keep the laning. I'm in favor of differentiation, when possible. I think it serves both groups of students best.
This district has a long tradition of what has been called site-based decision-making. And I'd like to kind of try to get your thoughts on that. And I think a good example is the inconsistency between the two high schools. Bell schedules are one example, one very simple example of that. We have two high schools that both have completely different bell schedules. We have two high schools that at one time had radically different counseling systems, two high schools that have totally separate college prep website processes.
Really?
So I'm just wondering, where do you balance, where do you come down on just how much autonomy a local school site should have as compared to innovating, but then deciding on a best practice and spreading it through the district?
Yeah. Again, I think this, ultimately, the school board is responsible for what happens in the schools. And as you brought up, there's been a number of inconsistent practices in the past. My understanding is that there's been differing policies depending upon which school a student attended, disciplinary policies, bullying prevention policies, cheating policies, weighted GPA reporting deferred between the two high schools. And even the instructional minutes varied and would have varied between the two high schools. One high school would have offered more instructional minutes than the other. And in some years that we were looking at, in neither case, in neither high school met the standard, the state's minimum standard. So I believe that there needs to be proper oversight from the school board. So I believe that there needs to be proper oversight from the school board and that some of these areas that, such as I, um, was talking about, need to have consistency. Um, within that, I believe that some site-based flexibility obviously has shown merit. I mean, we have choice schools, Hoover, Aloney. And we've got Mandarin immersion, we've got Spanish immersion. We have, uh, the JLS Connections Program, among others. And so while consist, within those parameters of consistency that's required and needed, I would think that some site-based flexibility is valuable as well.
Just to take the bell schedule as one example-
Okay.
-because assuming both bell schedules meet the instructional minutes requirements, let's leave that issue aside.
Okay.
Should both high schools have the same bell schedules? Or should they be able to have any formulation that they wish?
I mean, I think it's, I think it's permissible as long as they meet the standards. I mean, I think from a common sense standpoint, I think most people would think, why don't they just have the same bell, bell schedule?
What do you think?
I agree with that. Why don't they just have the same bell schedule? But then again, I think it is permissible to have some variation as long as they meet the state's minimum standards.
So how would you vote?
I'd rather see the same bell schedule.
Okay.
I don't think that is a legal question, though, if they meet.
No, I don't mean it as a legal question, but if-
Yeah.
-the two principals come to the board and say, "We want to be on different bell schedules," are you going to vote yes or no on that?
I think-
Not that that would necessarily come as a vote, but I'm interested in your-
Right. I, I mean, I think that's not a have-to-be item. I mean, if they're meeting the legal standard in both cases, then I think it's permissible to have some flexibility.
So you would vote to approve?
So I would, in that case, I would probably vote to allow some variation in the bell schedule as long as the legal standards are being met.
Okay.
And would you be supportive of teachers coming for approval for, you know, innovative programs like the social justice pathway at Pally? There was the high school learning design team that, or they wanted to pilot a school within a school program and that sort of faded away. But sort of the idea of ideas bubbling up from the teachers and then them really wanting to try it out with students at their school site and coming to the board for approvals, that's something you would be supportive of?
I'd be open to that. I mean, I think innovation is good. I think, um, you know, obviously, we, we need to make sure that the basics are taken care of, you know, in terms of our A through G classes, that we have accessibility and availability to those A through G classes and that our students are able to make their way through those. But innovation is good, yes. I'd be supportive of that.
Your, your answer on the bell schedules, would that apply to, say, bullying policies?
Which policy?
Bullying policies?
No, it would not.
And what's the distinction there?
Well, I think in bullying policy, we do have, um, the UCP comes into play.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that we have a two-tier bullying policy. But the UCP does come into play and, uh, in my, in my view, um, those need to be consistently applied. I mean, the law demands standard treatment of our students.
Right, but just like with the instructional minute requirement, you said that if they conform with the instructional minute requirement, they can do the bell schedules the way they want. If they're complying with the UCP, should they be able to have-
I would draw a line there, no.
Okay.
Needs to be consistent.
Seems like the number of issues that the school district deals with just gets more and more numerous. And I'm thinking about something that happened this spring with the renaming of the schools. Um, so I'm curious, what in your opinion did you think the Fred Yamamoto issue surfaced?
Did you say when did it surface?
No, what, what in your opinion, what issues did it surface?
Oh, what issues did it surface? I'm sorry.
For the district.
The Fred Yamamoto? Well, from my perspective, um, you know, my understanding of the renaming in the first place was to try to be sensitive to, um, a number of our, um, segments in our community because of the eugenic situation. So obviously, that was very sensitive for certain segments of our community. But in the same way, um, the Fred Yamamoto situation, nothing against Fred Yamamoto, but the last name Yamamoto also brought up concerns for certain segments of our community. And, um, for a process that was initiated, it seemed to me, to try to be sensitive and to try to show sensitivity to segments of our community, I thought it was very unfortunate that it seemed to devolve into a process that became insensitive to other segments of our community.
Do you think the school board mishandled how that was rolled out in any way? How that decision was made?
Uh, well, I know that, um, they didn't include certain, um, ethnicities on the district committee, which was unfortunate because maybe those issues would have surfaced earlier.
And do you think there's something that the school district should do at this point? Recognizing that there is some sensitivity among a certain segment of the population?
Do you mean, should they have a committee and should they have the resolution that was passed?
Should they reach out more? Should they?
I think it's a tough one for the school district. I mean, these are parents. And the school district's main job is educating students. But certainly, there's, um, there's hard feelings and sensitivity there. So anything the school district could do to assist with that would be helpful. Um, but I think the process that was, um, anticipated or contemplated with the committee and with a certain resolution that was being put forth just served to make things even more, um, to harden feelings, I thought. I thought that was unfortunate.
We're running out of time, and I wanted to try to just get some really quick answers to several different questions here-
Okay.
-if I could. So the first is this, um, challenge to the district about the way it elects its school board members. If you're elected to the school board, this will already be dealt with because there's a timeline involved. But if you were on the board right now, what would be your response to that demand from the law firm relating to district elections?
Well, that's a legal process, right? That I don't, I'm not sure the school board would be involved in, that this lawyer will be pursuing, right? About trying to break things up into districts?
Well, it's a-
Instead of an at-large-
It's a potential lawsuit. So the district needs to decide whether to challenge-
I see.
-defend against a lawsuit in hopes of preventing district elections. Or they will choose to settle, and in all likelihood, a settlement, the only settlement that'll be permissible, that'll be acceptable to the other side will be district elections.
Mm-hmm.
So in essence, that's the, the choice that if you were on the board right now, you would have to make.
I see. I guess I would need to examine that a little bit further because I'm not sure that, um, the ethnicities that are being referred to are really concentrated in one district or another and more how that territory would be divided up. I mean, that's, it's, it's a possibility that that's the case, but I haven't really examined the geography and where, demographically, where people are located.
And if you concluded that that wasn't the case, would you then choose to-
That they were distributed over the whole, you mean?
If, if your conclusion was that there wasn't a racial or ethnic, um, bias to the way school board members are elected, would you then decide that the school district should defend its current election process against a lawsuit?
That's a tough question.
I know.
Yeah. I, I think I would need to know how the racial and ethnic lines, as, as I said. I would need to have a lot of information about that. Because in general, I would favor that, that I, that I would think that ethnicities should be represented. But I'm not sure if Palo Alto breaks down that way.
Right, and my question is hypothetically-
I know, hypothetically-
-if there was no evidence that there was-
If there was no evidence. So if there was no evidence, then there'd be no need for that suit. And so I would defend the at-large voting. If there is evidence, then I would be more sympathetic to that.
Right. Okay. Um, on union negotiations, contract negotiations-
Yes.
-this, this is typically in districts, a totally closed process. Um, I'm wondering if you have any desire or proposal to change that current system?
Yes, I'd like to see it be open to the public.
And what does that mean exactly?
Well, I guess currently now, that's, there's no visibility whatsoever into that process until it's done. And to me, that doesn't seem appropriate for a public entity that's financed by our public tax dollars.
So would you want the negotiating sessions to be open? Would you want the proposals to be sunshine? You know, would you want the community to have a hearing before the board had agreed to a, a contract, what specifically?
I, I don't know that I would be able to, I mean, say all the steps, but I would certainly think that the very least that should happen is that there should be a public hearing before agreeing to a contract, yes. And I would be in favor of more transparency than that.
Okay. There's been a tension in this district between parents that want more rigor and parents that want less rigor in the schools.
Yes.
And that's manifested in a lot of different issues, but I'd like to just ask your opinion about one aspect of that. And that has to do with, um, AP exams. The district's current policy is, in essence, give full notice to the parents and the kids as to what's involved in taking an AP test. And if you're going to take more than X number, you're going to have to sign off on your understanding of that.
Mm-hmm.
Is that good enough for you? Or do you think there should be changes in this district's approach to limiting or in other ways, dealing with the propensity of kids to want to take lots of AP courses?
I'm satisfied with the district's approach. I think it's a family decision, family choice, and a student's choice about what, uh, schedule they wish to pursue and how much rigor they want to have in their, their schedule or not.
What if the kids themselves felt that, that, there, there, there should be limitations? Would that sway you at all?
Well, I think that would be a stakeholder voice, but I think parents also would have a viewpoint probably, and residents as well. And I would be need to listen to them as well.
And it sounds like you're, you're sort of inclined to let this be a family matter?
I would.
Okay. And homework policy? The district has a homework policy that we seem to have a heck of a time figuring out how to actually implement.
Mm-hmm.
What's your views on that?
Well, I have done some reading about that and, um, you know, Schoology is one of the tools that are available to try to help. I know that, that has been talked about as a communications tool, which, um, at least for a portion of that homework policy, it seems as though it would be useful to, for the teachers to be able to enter all the information in there and also put down. The amount of time that they expected task would take. Um, I'm not sure that's really being fully implemented at the moment, which would be helpful. And then, of course, having feedback from the students to talk about how much time it actually took them, which is going to be an individual, because each student will vary. But I don't think that that rollout, that rollout is, in, in terms of entering into Schoology, is 100% compliant yet.
Clearly not.
Right. So I think that would be important.
Would you make that a negotiating topic in the contract negotiations?
I thought it already was a provision in the contract, in the prior contract.
Well, it's not a provision, there's a provision that it be negotiated, but I'm not sure that it's actually really, we don't know. Because we don't know what's happening in negotiations.
Somebody had told me, but I didn't have any visibility that, that it was already a provision in the contract, but that could be wrong, I don't know.
Wasn't the mandatory use of Schoology was?
The mandatory use of Schoology was, but that didn't include the estimating time of homework.
Yeah.
It just meant that teachers, technically, I don't think this is happening, are supposed to be entering assignments into Schoology so that there's, uh, they're available to parents to see. So, isn't that right?
I believe so.
I would want to double check. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You're in support of a general counsel being hired, is that right?
I am, yeah.
Okay, and then the other thing was, um, uh, term limits. Are you supporting the term limit?
I support term limits. I support it.
Any other quickies that you guys wanted to? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.